It's now 6:00 PM on Monday, February 24th, 2025. Call the Luddington City Council meeting to order. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Counselor Trusano.
Present.
Counselor Crimber.
Here.
Counselor Wenceski.
Here.
Counselor Large.
Here.
Counselor Stibbets.
Here.
Counselor Shaw.
Here.
And Counselor Balger.
Here.
All present?
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to invite Mayskay Sheriff, Kim Cole, to the lectern to deliver the invocation. Welcome, Sheriff.
Thank you for the invitation, Mayor. Let's pray. Father, I come before you this evening humble and grateful that I get to live in such an awesome community. Father, I thank you for our elected officials before me this evening who give of their time to serve such an awesome city. However, Father, I come to you tonight with a heavy heart thinking of the Bateson family out in Custer who lost their 16-year-old daughter Sammy last week in a horrible car crash. And Lord, your word says, "You know when a sparrow falls from the sky." So we trust, Lord, that you will comfort the family. Lord, I pray you will comfort the MCE family, her classmates, and the entire Mason County community as we rally around the family and show our support for them. Lord, again, thank you for the opportunity to serve as the county sheriff, and thank you for the folks here again who have willing or who are willing to serve on city council. Pray these things in Jesus's name. Amen. Thank you.
Thank you. Would you join me in the pledge of allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, I'll open the floor for public comment, and I request that anyone wishing to address the council, please step forward to the lectern, speak directly into the microphone, state your name, street address, or ward, city of residence, and organizational affiliation, if that's appropriate. Once you've done this, you'll be recognized for three minutes. Please address all comments to this chair. If the time limit expires during any comment, I would ask that the speaker respectfully finish their sentence and yield the floor. If you wish to present materials directly to the council, I'd ask that you leave those materials on the lectern shelf below the microphone. And then there'll be another opportunity for public comment following communications for city officials, and the floor is now open. Good evening.
Hi. Tom Rada, Sixth Ward. Paraphrasing C.S. Lewis, "The essential vice, the utmost evil, the deadliest sin is pride. Unchastity, anger, greed, drunkenness, and all that are mere flea bites in comparison. It was through pride that the devil became the devil, and pride that banished us from the Garden of Eden. Pride leads to every other vice, is a complete anti-God state of mind, is pride which has been the chief cause of misery in every nation and every family since the world began. I looked at pride in relation to the Cornerstone Baptist Church, whose pastors have given the first three invocations of the year, and Ramire Barnett serves as the Chair of the Elder Board. They were only critical of pride and the deception and ruin it breeds in biblical times and now. Why would this council close off a park to the general public and shut down a street in July in order for some to celebrate the devil's most effective and destructive tool, pride? Admittedly, the last two Julies, this council has had greed back and outs in this chamber, raising tax rates and taking $300,000 extra of the taxpayers' money. And then the police thief hosts lavish, gluttony banquets, dropping money belonging to the taxpayers to buy over $300 in plaques from a city official's business and spends over $100 at the brewery across the street to pat his poorly-trained officers on the back. Why would she, why would we expect humility and other virtues to emanate from this council when they allow all of this without a blush among themselves and sit mute when their police captain, caveman, wipes his butt with the Constitution and banishes a citizen from a public park without any authority just because that citizen was almost victimized by the city's negligence? Back then, you wanted to close off the park in order to kill deer that no park user or visitor had complained about having therein. Now you're on the precipice of closing another public park and a street in order to welcome a celebration of the greatest of sins. Seek humility within yourself. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rada. Anyone else?
Good evening. Jeff Henry. Counsel, Chairman, Luddington's had a fight. DNR's hiding fraud, and your silence aids them. Today, we filed, excuse me, last Thursday, we filed a remand to keep this with Chief Judge Nellis. Hours ago, the DNR denied our FOIA for 1973 to 1994 Michigan State Waterways Commission records, claiming litigation privilege. A Court of Appeals ruling says they're wrong. Exemption doesn't apply, exposing Keith Wilson's schemes from these Luddington offices to Ron Olson's $2 million from 2019 to 2013 deals violating the Natural Resources Environmental Protection Act, per analysis Snagowski signed 2023 order. The 1975 study, which you received today, Wilson's own, says the Michigan State's Waterways Commission advisory since 1973, and if you read it, only advisory for fisheries to the Natural Resource Commission, not marinas. The 1958 Attorney General says it was unconstitutional, yet they keep going, Chairman. Minutes ago, your city attorney emailed, claiming we locked it right up. Lies about our January 3rd resolution he had for weeks. Drove 80, 94 miles today with it in his pocket. He and the city manager agreed with us in November, now it's silent. You've had this since 2:40 PM, FOIA denial, appeals proof, our resolution demanding DNR transparency and AG investigation. Olson's 2015 dual-agreement lie that I gave you two weeks ago, advisory NRC, Michigan State Waterways Commission, head by the Attorney General until 2022, defies the Nellis order. Representative Kurt Vanderwell won't help. He could have called. He could have called Chanta Gecko. She's his legislative research director. She didn't feel comfortable talking with us, with me, because this doesn't happen. It doesn't happen that Keith Wilson gets up in 1975 while he's marketing Luddington, and he signs off that the Waterways Commission should be abolished. Did you read that today, Chairman? And they also wrote in there that they were advisory to fisheries. The people need to tell the court, this needs to stay here. The Marine man keeps it here with the judge's order from 2023 to have the DNR come up here and explain it. Luddington's people need this here. Pass our regulus, our resolution tonight.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Daniel Johnson, 503 North Levine Street. I'm sure you know about all the EOs that Trump has put out. The EO ensuring accountability for all agencies, he put that out February 18th, 2025. The fact sheet also reigns in independent agencies to restore a government that answers to the American people. This EO does not end separation of powers, the judicial branch, or anything like that. It simply says, "For purposes of running executive agencies, POTUS and the AG will provide all legal interpretations." The problem is that the agencies have acted for far too long as independent of both the President and the Congress, almost as if they were a fourth pillar of government. The order gives the President direct control over independent agencies with massive powers that have, that have operated outside the White House oversight for decades. The Federal Elections Commission, the FCC, the SEC, the Federal Trade Commission. The order requires all agencies to submit their regulations to Trump's Budget Chief, Russ Vaught. Vaught's OMB will now write performance standards for agencies head, for agency heads, and report directly to Trump about who's following orders and who's not. So with the EO from Trump, Trump's first term, the red folder that I supplied you that I really didn't expect back, I gave it to you as the lifesaver, actually, like preserver, coupled with Trump's second-term EO that I shared with all of you in an email last week, brings us to this EO that reigns independent agencies to restore a government that answers to the American people. What does that mean to you all here? It means to me self-governance, constitutional law, Black Law's dictionary, common law, not maritime law of the corporation of London, which is slave law. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Annette Quillen, Sixth Ward. I'm here in favor of the chickens still. In the two years that you had this ordinance in place, and prior to, I've never been attacked by a chicken while I'm walking down the street, nor have I been awakened early in the morning from a cackling chicken. And this has been over several, several years. So they have not been a problem to the city as far as I can see, and I do hope you keep this ordinance together. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? All righty, we'll move on, closed public comment. We'll move on to approval of the consent agenda, item number five. The first item would be approved, the February 10th, 2025 regular meeting minutes. Second item is payment of bills, and the third item is adopt this agenda as presented. Looking for a motion and support.
I'll make that motion.
Support.
Motion and support to approve the consent agenda. Any comments or questions? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same thing. Motion carried. Thank you. Move on to committee reports, and first up is Finance Personnel, Counselor Wenceski.
I have a small report tonight, but no action items. On the report, the city of Luddington is again supporting the Household Hazardous Waste Program sponsored by the Mason Lake Manasty and Oceanic Conservation Districts. Our share for this year is $3,450. Last year, nearly 62 tons of hazardous waste was collected and properly disposed of at a cost of about $86,000. This program is important to protect our precious water resources. The 2025 Household Hazardous Waste Cleanup will be the third Saturday in August, August 16th, so look for the signs for that.
Thank you. Anything else?
That's it.
All righty. Moving on to Building and Licensing, Long Range Planning, and Industrial Development, Counselor Trusano.
Thank you, Your Honor. I have no report, but I do have one action item. First presentation of ordinance number 554-25, the Chicken Ordinance. You have it in front of you. Before I make a motion, or I'm not making a motion tonight, but there is one change from the document that you have. So, you know, Building and License reviewed this at the last meeting, and we took out the sunset provision, but we missed one reference to it. If you look on page four of the document, subsection eight, that begins with an initial permit. I'll read it as it should be. We're getting rid of the, basically, the last two lines. "An initial permit shall be valid for a period of one year. If in the judgment of the city manager or their designee, the permit has abided by all ordinance provisions and permit conditions, and has not created a nuisance to the owners or occupants of adjacent properties or the neighborhood, the permit may be renewed on an annual basis for one additional year. And will strike provided that such term may be limited by the sunset of the ordinance two-year following the program." So it's that one change. I do want to make note, we have two people who currently have permits for chickens, and according to staff, we've had no issues with it and no complaints.
John, I see that they pay an application fee. Do you know how much that is?
No, I don't.
Okay. I was just wondering. We probably said it, but I don't, I don't remember what it was either. Thanks.
I can provide that when we move it to the next meeting.
Yeah, check and see if you would. Thanks.
Thank you.
All right, anything else?
That's all I have, Your Honor.
All righty. Public Safety, Public Utilities, Counselor Balger.
We will meet in this room on Wednesday, the 26th, at 4:00 for our monthly meeting. I have no action items tonight, but I'll turn to the Chief for the monthly update on police activity.
Thank you, Counselor Balger. Mr. Mayor, members of council, for January of 2025, LPD dealt with 192 calls for service, handled 31 arrests, issued 34 parking, or traffic citations, and 62 parking citations. Seven gun purchase permits, one golf cart registration, eight sex offender registrations, 59 FOIA requests, and 166 hours of overtime. Of note, coming up, we have a event tomorrow night, 6:00 PM, at Luddington Bay called the Food Fight. It's a competition between Chief Henderson of the Fire Department and Captain Haberman of the Police Department to see who can cook the best.
Gumbo.
Gumbo, thank you.
It's a chicken gumbo, is it?
Asking for a friend. No, uh, no. Well, maybe, a little bit. Maybe a little bit of chicken in there. I can't, I can't give away these secret ingredients, but the benefit to this is it sponsors or it raises money for the Lake Shore Food Club. So every, all the resources, all funds that come in from this will benefit the food club, which is a fantastic organization. The other thing I'd like to mention is on March 17th, in council chambers, we'll be having a community meeting with the Police Department to talk about the survey that was put out and the results that came back from that. So we charge your attendance as well as the public's. Unless you have any questions, that's all I have.
What was the date on that, Chief?
March 17th, 6:00 PM.
Chief Jones, I had one question, too. How are we doing with parking in the winter here? Is it, is it pretty good that people are abiding by getting off the streets?
As a general rule, yes.
Okay.
There's a few spots that we have had some issues. We have this, you have in January, we have 62 parking citations, and the overwhelming majority of those were snow-related. But as a general rule, everyone is abiding by it and doing quite well.
Good, thanks.
And again, we only write those when DPW is out. We don't write those every day. It's only when we know that DPW is coming out.
Thank you.
So that's all I have tonight, Your Honor. All righty, thank you. Move on to Cemetery Parks, Recreation, and Waterfront, Counselors Stibbets.
Thank you. We have no report and no action items, but we do have a meeting tomorrow here in council chambers, which is Tuesday, the 25th, at 4:00. And that is all.
Thank you. Now, City Council, item number seven on the agenda. Any items of business that you need to bring forward at this time?
I have a couple of those. The next Coffee with the Counselors will be held on Thursday, March 6th, at noon at the bookmark, and Counselors Mike Shaw and Kathy Wenceski will be in attendance there. And again, that's Thursday, March 6th, at noon at bookmark. The other thing I have is in a report from Hamlin Township. Their meeting was February 13th. Hamlin Township is one of four townships selected in Mason County to have an election audit conducted of the November election. The election audit was passed with flying colors. Discussion was held on a possible need for a forensic audit of the township books. Bids will be put out, and a decision will be made at the next meeting. The Hamlin Lake fireworks will be held on July 5th. These fireworks are sponsored by the Hamlin Lake Preservation Society. And that's it.
All righty, thank you. Any other business? All right, and we'll move on to Mayor's Section, and the first item up for consideration is the approval of the Gus Macker event for June 13th through the 15th, 2025. You have the event permit, or the completed permit, I believe before you, and I'd be looking for a motion and support for that.
I'll make a motion to support, to approve that.
I'll second that. A motion by Counselor Shaw, second by Counselor Crimber to approve the Gus Macker event for June 13th through the 15th, 2025. Any discussion, comments, or questions?
Counselor Stibbets, I know last year, I'm not on the Parks Committee anymore. Last year, he came and gave a little preview of how it was going. Is he still coming to Parks to talk about it?
He is not and has not scheduled any of those conversations, but we can definitely encourage him to do so.
I think that'd be great. He did a nice job last year, but it'd be nice just to see what he's doing this year, too.
Absolutely.
Any other comments or questions? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Moving on to the next item is the approval of the special event application, or public use permit application for J.C.'s International, I believe, Luddington Freedom Festival Children and Pet Parade, and that's slated for July 3rd at 7:00 PM. Looking for a motion?
So moved.
I'll second that. Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve this request for, to hold the Children's Pet Parade. Children and Preparade at 7:00 on the 3rd. Any comments or questions?
Just a comment that, geez, think about the Fourth of July, how nice that is. And to the J.C.'s, thanks for getting your requests in early. That really helps, too. Helps with all the planning, so thanks for doing that.
Anything else? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Thank you. Moving on to item number three, that'd be the J.C.'s request as well for the Freedom Festival One Mile Dash and Grand Parade to be held on July 4th from 1:30 to 4:00 PM. And look for a motion to support that.
So moved.
Support.
A motion by Counselor Large, support by Counselor Stibbets. Any comments or questions? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Thank you. The next item, item number four, is approval of the J.C.'s request to hold the Luddington Freedom Festival fireworks on July 4th, beginning at dusk and anticipated to end at 11:00 PM. Setup time, I believe, or takedown time is July 5th, about 4:00 PM. They should have it. They should have it completely dismantled. At any rate, look for a motion to support that.
So moved.
Second.
We're all really excited about it.
I can see that.
For discussion, it looks like the application has an error in it.
Say again?
The, the application looks like it has an error in it.
In what regard?
Take-down time, July 4th, 4:00 p.m.
Yeah, I'm not sure, I'm not sure in terms of the, it says 4:00 p.m., so I'm assuming they're gonna wait until daylight, the next day, to dismantle portions of it.
So shouldn't that be July 5th?
It says that on mine.
Yeah, it says July 5th on mine.
Oh, okay. Mine has July 4th.
Okay.
That's the One Mile Dash.
Oh, well, I stand corrected. I was looking at the wrong application.
All righty.
Sorry about that.
Very good, no problem. So we have a motion by Counselor Tibbets, support by Counselor Large, to approve the Freedom Festival fireworks on July 4th. Any comments or questions?
Just one, Mayor, if we could. If we look at all these events that are planned for the Fourth of July, how wonderful it is that the J.C.'s take that job on. That's huge. I can't tell you how much we appreciate that, we really do. So thanks for doing all of that, and what would we ever do without you guys? So, thanks so much.
Anyone else? Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carried, thank you. Next item is number, item number five, approve Luddington Pride Festival 2025, slated for July 26th of this year. And invite anybody that's here, this is a new event, I believe. So anybody that would care to come and answer any questions that there might be regarding that event, ask you to come up to the lectern. All right. I did have a question because regarding this, and I'll open it up here in just a little bit. My question was, the, I'm recalling the, the meeting for Parks and Rec, and there was some discussion, and then on the application, it said, we'll include entertainers with music, food trucks, and vendors. And I was just hoping for a bit of an explanation. Many of these other events that we've approved, these are several years, if not several decades old, so we know kind of what to expect. Think it'd be helpful to know what to expect with this one, because this is the first year, so. I don't know if we can get an answer from that. Do you, Chair, do you?
I, I do recall from our meeting, when, when we did ask them that very question, from what I'm remembering. And, and what I believe they said, and I would have to go back and look at the meeting minutes to double-check, but I believe what they said was live music. What that entails, I'm not certain. But what we had discussed was that they were gonna use that bandshell area for musicians and singers to perform, is, is what I remember from the meeting. So I don't have a concrete answer, no.
All righty.
I, I also didn't quite understand, I don't, I would have liked to have heard more explanation, but what happened was they didn't know what date they were going to select. Because we had told them that the other event will be Rhythm and Dunes. And Chief had said that we'd probably have to cut it back to five, which is reasonable. And I was expecting them to come back and give us a little bit more explanation and possibly tell us that they're gonna pick the alternate date. But what I missed in the meeting minutes was, we told them that they didn't have to come back. So I would have, I would have liked to have heard a little more. And the only concern I have is, and nobody said nothing about this, is that I heard that they said drag show. That was just me, nobody else heard it. But I would still vote for it, because that's their freedom of speech. And I support, I defend that for them.
Okay.
And, but I also have a concern that if they did have something like that, they wouldn't be exposed to children, and that would be a concern. But however, I'd still vote for it. That, that's the only expression that I would like to say.
Anybody else have any information on that at all?
We did talk to them at that meeting, and they were just going to call City Hall and give the date, they were going to go back to their committee and talk about their alternative date, as well as the date that they chose. And they were just going to give us a call here at City Hall. And I know that's how we had left that portion of the meeting.
Okay. All right, what's your pleasure with this?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay, we have a motion to support by Counselor Trizano, and support, motion to approve by Counselor Trizano, and a motion to support by, or support of that motion by Counselor Bulger. Any other comments or questions?
Yes, Mayor, I have one.
Yep.
So in portion of the meeting that we were at, we asked Chief what his concerns on traffic was, and I want him to, if he would, give us his concerns tonight on that.
Sure. There, there were estimatively 500 people. So if you say two per vehicle, that's 250 cars. And if they're wrapping up at five, which was the early adjustment, you already have people coming into town for Rhythm and Dunes, which is several thousand people. And my concern is the traffic, being able to get 200, at least 250 cars out while you're trying to get 1,000 or 1,500 cars in, right? So I, I do have some concerns. And that's, and that's a estimate, 500 people. If it ends up being 1,000 people, then we have 500 cars we have to get in and we have to get out. So I, I don't know that we have the infrastructure and the parking available downtown for two events that could be problematic for us, in my mind. My, my, my hope was that they were gonna come back with the alternate date, when it was a non-Rhythm and Dunes date, because then we don't have any issues with conflicting events and parking and so forth. But they, they didn't, they came back on the same date as Rhythm and Dunes. So that's my concern, is, is the parking, the congestion, getting traffic in, getting traffic out. That's my concern.
Is street blockage also a concern in this, is that relative to what you're talking about?
Right, you're, you're gonna have cars on both sides of the streets, you're gonna have pedestrians, and north of Luddington Avenue, south of Luddington Avenue, it's not gonna matter. For 250 cars, you're not, you are gonna expand that out into the neighborhood, you're gonna expand that out for, for the rally, you're gonna expand it south of the avenue for Rhythm and Dunes. We already know it goes north of Luddington Avenue. So the, the congestion, the cars, the traffic, being able to get through is, is, from my perspective, is the issue when the, both events go at the same time.
For me, Your Honor.
Sure.
It's interesting, we're having this discussion, because we didn't have it about the Fourth of July parade, where we actually closed Luddington Avenue for a good part of that. We have thousands of people that come in, and they park all over the city. But we didn't have that discussion worrying about that, but we're doing it for this. To me, it makes no sense.
I get it, I understand what you're, what you're saying. I will tell you that what you've said is not true. When you say "we,"
We just passed, we just passed.
Excuse me, I understand. What I'm saying to you is, the city has, for long, for, for events that happen year after year after year after year, at several points in that history, discussions take place, whether it's Macker, whether it's Fourth of July, whether it's the parade, whether it's fireworks, all of those things, traffic are considered. So I just, I, I'm not debating with you about this event. What I'm debating is when you make a categorical statement saying that we've never done this, and when in fact we have.
Okay, I concede that we've done it in the past. We just passed resolutions on two major events for the city. And this whole issue of parking did not come up tonight. So I find it a little bit odd that all of a sudden we're worried about hosting two events in the city. That's all.
And I will tell you that we have a practice, that when an event is a new event, we talk about things like that. We, as a city, whether it's the Police Department, talking with public safety, whether it's the, the organizers coming in to answer some of those questions, formulating a traffic pan, a plan, a parking plan, all of those things take place. But when you're talking about an event that's three decades old, you're probably not gonna mention the same pile of requests. So I think where we're at right now is, we have a motion that you've, you've made, and Counselor Bulger has, has supported. And we can just go ahead and vote on that unless you have something new.
Nope, that's it.
Perfect, okay.
Well, I do, I would like to say something, too. I was on the Parks Committee when this first came up. It was just a first, first blush there. And then they came back, and, and I'm not on the Parks anymore, so I've lost track of that. But it sounds to me like it would be best, in, in all the confusion that's here, to send it back to committee, to you guys sort out, what is this music stuff they're talking about? Get some more definitions on that. Really maybe rehash the date again to see if traffic is a problem. But I don't know, would I have to make a motion on that, or?
There's a motion on the table to approve it.
Okay.
Yep, so we'll vote on that motion, and if that, whatever happens with that, we can, I don't, I don't know if we can make some, two simultaneous motions, but my, my thought is, we have to vote on the motion that's on the table.
So, let's just get this clear, so I know how to vote, too, on this. So Ross, if we voted, if I voted no on this, because I think it should go back to committee, then I could suggest that we take it back to committee after that? Would I have to make a motion on that? Would I just suggest that it go back to committee? Or is it done? Is, is we just not, we're not gonna offer this?
The motion itself didn't contemplate a, a further committee action. So what's before you now is the permit as requested and as written there. If your desire is, I guess, each counselor would have to independently vote on whether or not this date, at this time, in this location, is what they want to move forward with, then that would be a vote in the affirmative. And if you didn't want that, that would be the negative. I guess what I'm unclear about is whether or not that would preclude a subsequent application for a different date. And I'm not, I don't know what the practice has been with Parks in terms of further discussions on events and how that evolves in terms of that practice. So if that's.
I don't know if this will answer your question, and I don't mean to, I don't bring it up to be argumentative, but I will just tell you that we had a, a similar situation here within the last year as it relates to the Lake Stride and Macker. And so we, we did, and we asked one of them, one that was decades old, it was, it was the Lake Stride. We asked them to go back and get off of their traditional weekend. And because Macker fell as the calendar changed, and they were, they were gracious enough to do that. And so we did, that's an example of one of those situations where this discussion over a couple other events took place.
I guess what I'd say is, I'm not aware of any prohibition that would prevent you from reconsidering a subsequent application as submitted. But I, I concede that, you know, if, if that is the precedent. And I guess the question would be for me, if that was, if that involves voting down that event first before the subsequent changes were made. And I, I don't have that information before me, so.
Any other questions or comments?
Yeah, if I may.
Sure.
Again, we just approved Gus Macker. And granted, we didn't talk about the issues about parking. We just approved the fireworks. We're talking about just having two events with combined total of people would be less than what we get for the fireworks, what we get for the parade, and what we get for Gus Macker. But you wanna make a big deal out of it, because we're having two events in one day. I just don't understand it.
I also, I'm so sorry for interrupting. I would also like to make a quick comment. I, I do remember having this discussion at our Parks meeting. And we had talked about the alternative date, and we had, I'm, I'm sad that the Pride Festival people aren't here to answer, help answer some of these questions. And I think that would, you know, eliminate a lot of, of the problems, problems that we're having at the moment. We, we, we talked about the parking, we talked about the, the issues that that could potentially cost, have. So we did tell them, they needed to choose, we, the choices were, cut the time in half, so instead of from going 12 to 8 that day, they were going to cut it from 12 to 5. Or they could do their entire event on a different day. And that's how we left them at the committee meeting. And we told them that they could choose those dates, those were their choices. And then they came back and gave us what their choice was. They were really wanting to do this on July 26th. They've, they've filled out this application, they're, they're doing everything here, you know, by the book. And I would just really hate to go back to them and say, hey, well, just kidding, we, we need you to do it on this date, when we've already said that, okay, this was, this was gonna be an okay thing amongst the committee, you just have to lock down the date.
Okay.
So, and, and Sherry's right, I was in the committee also. And, and the deal of it is, is that we encouraged them to move to the second Saturday in July. There's no event in the city of Luddington in the second week of July. It would just be more convenient for us. I agree, they had already had plenty of plans in place for the, the fourth weekend. I would go forward on voting and approving that this one time, but I also would like for them to consider moving their future events to the second weekend when it's wide open. I mean, that, that just makes the most logical sense. Now, they had already had a bunch of plans, not realizing, I think, that, or putting together that the West Shore event was that weekend. It would have been really handy if they would have said, okay, you know what? That's a good idea, we'll go to the second weekend. But they chose the 26th, okay. Go forward with the 26th, if we can vote that in, have my quarrels of that. But I hope that in the future, that they would really consider the second weekend in July, when everything is wide open, because of the concerns, especially by Chief.
And I do think that when they, if this is, this is the, the first Luddington Pride Festival, so when they do, and if they do want to plan this in the future, I think this, since we're having this discussion here, it could easily be had again at that time. And just note that if we're having conflicting feelings about two events in one day, then that one event is that day, whoever schedules it first has that day.
And I would definitely defer to the committee. It sounds like you guys have given them the choices, you've given them some options. They've chosen what you've given them, and so you guys have worked a lot of things out. So thanks for your inputs on that.
All righty, anything else? Hearing nothing, we have, hearing nothing else, we have a motion by Counselor Trizano, support by Counselor Bulger, to approve Luddington Pride Festival 2025 on July 26th from 12 to 5. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign?
Aye.
Motion carried, thank you. All right, we'll move on to the second round of public comment. At this point, we'll adhere to the same guidelines as mentioned at the beginning of the, tonight's meeting, with the exception that each speaker will have two minutes. I request that anyone wishing to address counsel, please step to the lectern, state your name, street address, or ward, city of residence, and organizational affiliation, if that's appropriate. Once you've done this, you'll be recognized for two minutes. Ask that you speak directly into the microphone, address all comments to this chair. And the floor is now open for the second round of public comment.
Jeff Henry. Counsel, you've heard it. The DNR FOIA Dodge fails. Your city attorney lie about our January 3 resolution crumbles. Appeal says we're right. Wilson's fraud to Olson's $2 million deals, violating the Natural Resource Environmental Protection Act, defying the Mason County Court Order. Again, you've had this since 2:40 in the afternoon. Our resolution's clear, demand DNR transparency. AG investigation. Luddington's not Lansing's pawn. Pass it tonight. Your silence after three years are proof. Your attorney's 94-mile excuse betray us. We have the newspaper here, we have the radio listening tonight. Tomorrow's memorandum seals it. Actor, explain to Luddington why you're complicit. Time's up.
Tom Rada, sixth ward. Through experience, I found that city officials ignore issues brought before them when they don't have a viable argument for the defense of their actions or policies. For months, I've seen Mr. Henry, Mr. Karbaskey, and others come before this council and lay out a pattern of grave injustices by state agencies and local actors, negatively affecting their businesses and livelihoods for over five decades. Much of this unjust activity came with willing participation by the city in the past. Your corporate bottom line came out much better when several private marina businesses predating your own foray into that field suffered due to unfair competition. predaying your own foray into that field, suffered due to unfair competition by the city, who, with unlawful complicity from the state, both of which these businesses pay a large burden of taxes to, just to see that money used against them in a most unfair and disrespectful way. Ultimately, truth and justice are being pursued, which may not improve the position of the city corporate, but in the city's ethos, truth and justice should always be worth pursuing, especially when our citizens and/or business owners are victimized by unjust lies for over half a century. Your continued silence is compliance with what has gone down, and it loudly declares what contempt you have in seeing the truth come out and justice prevail. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone else? All right, then we'll close that second round of public comment, move on to miscellaneous business. Does anyone have any items of miscellaneous business?
I have one. I have one good thing to share. Did you know that this week is the National Invasive Species Awareness Week? The annual event highlights the critical work being done to raise awareness about invasive species, their environmental and economic input, and the positive step individuals and communities can take to help protect our environment. Invasive species are non-native plants, animals, insects and pathogens that can disrupt local ecosystems, harm agriculture and pose risks to human and animal health. They often grow quickly, reproduce prolifically and face too little or no natural predators in their new, new habitats, enabling them to thrive and spread unchecked. You can find more information about these specific invasive species on the city's website, which has a tab on it. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else? All right, then I entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved?
Support.
Counselor Stibbets and Counselor Large. Any conversation, if not? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. We're adjourned at 6:50.